Welcome to the September regular school board meeting for Pennsylvania County on the 13th of September. At this time, I will ask the clerk to do a roll call, please.
Mr. Burton.
Present.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Present.
Mr. Henderson.
Present.
Ms. Merricks.
Present.
Mr. Mills.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Present.
Mr. Dawes.
Present. We've got a few items to take care of and close before we get to the regular meeting, so if you'll bear with us just a minute, please. Do I have a motion to reconvene and certify? Close light of action.
I make a motion.
Have a second. Ms. Henderson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Burton.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Mr. Henderson.
Aye.
Ms. Merricks.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Moon.
Aye.
Mr. Dawes.
Aye. Uh, motions from close, please.
We have a motion to approve personnel changes for September 13, 2022 as presented.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on those? Roll call, please.
Mr. Burton.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Mr. Henderson.
Aye.
Ms. Merricks.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Moon.
Aye.
Mr. Dawes.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve the release from compulsory attendance for two students based on religious exemption.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Burton.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Mr. Henderson.
Aye.
Ms. Merricks.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Moon.
Aye.
Mr. Dawes.
Aye. Dr. Jones, I think you have a recommendation for us tonight.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dawes and members of the school board, uh, this evening I would like to recommend, uh, new assistant principal athletic director for Dan River Middle School.
High school.
I'm sorry, Dan River High School. I'm sorry, Dan River High School. Mr. Jonathan Fane, um, he applied with, with five other applicants, uh, very highly qualified, and he rose to the top. Uh, Mr. Fane earned his bachelor of science degree from Avant University and a master's in educational leadership from Lawwood University. He has 11 years teaching experience, four years as assistant principal, five years as coordinator of middle and high school athletics, and one year as director of athletics. I believe, I don't see Mr. Fane here this evening. I believe he's supervising events in his current district at this time for this evening. Uh, but we look forward to having him, uh, come onboard, uh, and be a part of the Dan River High School staff.
And I have a motion to get Mr. Fane the assistant principal AD for Dan River High.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Burton.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Mr. Henderson.
Aye.
Ms. Merricks.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Moon.
Aye.
Mr. Dawes.
Aye. Again, welcome tonight. Uh, we, that takes care of the closed items. Um, appreciate everybody being here. We have a large crowd. It's good to see that many come out tonight. Again, I appreciate it. At this time, do we have any additions to the agenda? Oh, can I have a motion to approve agenda as is?
I make a motion. We approve, if the agenda as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Burton.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Mr. Henderson.
Aye.
Ms. Merricks.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Moon.
Aye.
Mr. Dawes.
Aye. I do want to make one comment. If you wish to speak to the school board, you have to contact the central office by Friday before the meeting on Tuesday to be placed on the agenda. So we do not have a sign-up sheet before a meeting. So again, our policy is you have to talk to either superintendent or Ms. Hancock by Friday before the meeting on Tuesday. Okay? Um, consent agenda. Have a motion.
I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second. Anybody have any discussion on any of the consent agenda items? Um, just, just for one reference, I think at 2023 graduation site selection was all Avant, correct? So I'll be back at the Avant Center, okay? Roll call, please.
Mr. Burton.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Mr. Henderson.
Aye.
Ms. Merricks.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Moon.
Aye.
Mr. Dawes.
Aye. Mr. Mayhew, do we have any new employees in the audience, do you know?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Murphy? Okay, thank you. So we're gonna recognize some students now. Ms. Patty, I think you're gonna do that for us, right?
Yes.
And I think maybe Ms. Rigney. Can I ask all the board members to go to the front, please? We got quite a few, and we'll just rotate in and out when you need it.
Good evening, Chairman Dawes, school board members, Dr. Jones. It is my pleasure to recognize students in the following categories for their achievements, perfect scores on the required Virginia assessments, college board, and FFA. First, we will begin with perfect scores. Um, during the 2021-2022 school year, Pennsylvania County administered 17,489 SOL tests. In addition, 214 aligned SOL tests were administered for a total of 17,703 state assessments during the 2021-2022 school year. There were 124 perfect SOL scores. There were 32 perfect scores on aligned SOL test. There were five students assessed with aligned SOL test who made perfect scores on all aligned SOL assessments. Students recognized tonight distinguished themselves as being in the population of less than 1% of students receiving perfect scores on all required tests for their, um, grade level. From Brasville Elementary School, Principal Mrs. Felita Atkins, would you come forward? The certificate reads, "The Certificate of Excellence is presented to the students in this category in recognition and appreciation for outstanding achievements for perfect scores on all required Virginia assessments granted this 13th day of September 2022 by the Pennsylvania County School Board, School Board Chairman Calvin Dawes, School Board Vice Chairman Don Moon." The first student we were recognized from Brasville Elementary School is Grant Cam. If Grant Cam is present, if he would come forward to be recognized. Thank you and congratulations to Grant. Our next student is from Dan River Middle School. Principal, Mr. Chris Nick. Our student being recognized is Kalani Williams, perfect scores on all required Virginia assessments. And congratulations to Kalani. Our next three students are from Dan River High School. Principal is Mrs. Anastasia Romel. Present this evening is Assistant Principal, Mr. Franklin Ferguson. The first student recognized from Dan River High School is Randy Cook, perfect scores on all SOL assessments. Congratulations to Randy Cook. Our next student is Alexandra Hernandez. Recognition for perfect scores on all required Virginia assessments. Congratulations Alexandra. And next from Dan River High School is Carlos Williams, perfect scores on all Virginia SOL assessments. Congratulations Carlos, and congratulations to all students for this tremendous accomplishment. Thank you. The next recognitions are for college board. The first recognition student at Chatham High School, Mr. Jason Reese, Principal, Assistant Principals, Mr. Adelric Beard, and Mrs. Angela Andre-Pont. This first certificate reads, "This Certificate of Excellence is presented to Tristan Hernandez in recognition and appreciation for outstanding achievement for college board National Hispanic Recognition Award granted this 13th day of September 2022 by the Pennsylvania County School Board, Calvin Dawes Chairman, Mr. Don Moon Vice Chairman." Congratulations. And also Tristan. Congratulations to Tristan Hernandez in recognition and appreciation for outstanding achievement for college board National Rural and Small Town Award granted this 13th day of September. Congratulations. Congratulations Tristan. Our next recognition is Gretna High School. Principal, Mr. Eric Moon, Assistant Principals Katina Wright and Chad Scruggs. The student being recognized, this student, this Certificate of Excellence is presented to Jaden Ratliff in recognition and appreciation for outstanding achievement for college board National African-American Recognition Award granted this 13th day of September 2022. Congratulations. Congratulations, Jaden. The next three college board recognitions are for students at Tunstall High School. Principal, Mr. Brian Bowles, Assistant Principal, Mr. Dustin Echols is present, and also Assistant Principal is Lisa Totten. This Certificate of Excellence is presented to Juan Gonzalez in recognition and appreciation for outstanding achievement for college board National Hispanic Recognition Award granted this 13th day of September. Congratulations, Juan. Congratulations. Our next recognition is to Zachary Harris in recognition and appreciation for outstanding achievement for college board National Rural and Small Town Award granted this 13th day of September. Congratulations. And our final college board recognition is to Colin Waller in recognition and appreciation for outstanding achievement for college board National Rural and Small Town Award. Thank you, and congratulations to all of these students. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Angela Rigney, Director of Career and Technical Education, who will present the FFA awards. I'd also like to acknowledge the presence of Ms. Brenda Dawson, Director of Assessment and Accountability, who, um, put all of these scores together for us. If you would stand. Thank you, and also, I'd like to recognize Ms. Jenny Eaton, Director of Middle School Education and Title One, who's with us. And as we go into the FFA awards, I'd like to recognize the presence of Ms. Jessica Waller, Assistant Principal at Chatham Middle, and the principal is Ms. Julia Bowles. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Chairman Dawes, school board members, Dr. Jones, and guests. I want to take this opportunity this evening to recognize numerous students and programs for their outstanding accomplishments and achievements at the State FFA Convention this past June. FFA provides the next generation of leaders who will change the world. FFA makes a positive difference in the lives of students by developing their potential for premier leadership, personal growth, and career success through agricultural education. At this time, will the following students and advisors please come forward as your names are called? State FFA Agriculture Mechanics Team, second place, went to Chatham Middle School. Mr. Keith Jones, advisor and coach. Team members, James Elliott, Austin Bradley, Colin Sowers, and Cody Emerson. And I would also like to recognize James Elliott as the second-place State FFA High Individual for Agriculture Mechanics. Mr. Jones, you can stay up there. And we're still on Chatham Middle, so Mr. Jones, if you want to stay up as well as the others. Next, I would like to recognize Madeline Paris, third-place individual, State FFA Small Animal Care Career Development Event. And actually, if you all will stay up there, Ms. Waller, you can stay. Mr. Jones, you stay. And then I'm also gonna ask Mr. Reese to come down with Chatham High School, because our next recipient started at Chatham Middle School and is transitioning into the high school for his recognition um, on his award that I'll be recognizing him for this evening, and that is Nathan Paris, first-place State FFA AgroScience Fair Project. Nathan has advanced to the national competition next month. Congratulations, Nathan, and we wish you all the success at Nationals. Y'all can stay up there. Sorry. Next, we'll transition to Chatham High School, um, advisors, Mr. Jason Entz and Ms. Cassidy Shelton, who are unable to be with us this evening. And our recipient for this evening is gonna be Grace Stowe, who was the first-place recipient at the State FFA Creed Speaking Contest. Grace has also advanced to the national competition next month. Congratulations, Grace, and we wish you much success at the National FFA Convention. Next, I would like to recognize Mr. Holden Mills, holding place first in the State Proficiency Award for Agriculture Mechanics and Repair. Congratulations, Holden. Now you three gentlemen can sit. Next, I'll be recognizing Tunstall High School, FFA. Mr. Echols, you can come on down as well. First, I'll be recognizing the State FFA Farm Business Management Career Development Team for placing second at the State FFA Convention. Dr. Jessica Jones, advisor and coach, if you would come forward, please. Team members, Mia Davis and Caitlin Knight. Congratulations, and if you will all stay, stay put. We've got one more recognition. Tunstall High FFA Chapter is also being recognized as an FFA National Chapter Award Program. They received the state gold rating for superior chapter and will advance to the national level of competition next month at the National FFA Convention. Please join me in congratulating all of the students and advisors on these outstanding accomplishments.
This concludes our student presentations. I'd also like to acknowledge the presence of Ms. Jessica Dalton, um, Principal of Career and Technical Center, and thank Mr. Mayhew, Assistant Superintendent for Administration for Assistance this evening. Thank you.
Let's give all these students one more round of applause. Isn't it great? Okay, up next we have the character word of the month is trustworthiness. Mr. Skerrish from Chatham High School.
Good evening, members of the board. It is my privilege to speak before you on behalf of the student representatives and the student body of Chatham High School. Before I share with you, I would like to say that it is fitting that you asked the Cavalier to be first in line to present as Chatham has been a premier leader in the county since its founding in 1964. Even today, we are recognizing three of my fellow FFA members and their state achievements this past June at the Virginia FFA Convention. This month, I've been tasked with presenting you all trustworthiness. As you all know, having a strong bond of trust with those in your life, whether their relationships be work or personal, is a key to success. I found a quote that I thought put into words exactly how much we should value this trust. It reads, "Trust is the glue of life. It is the most essential ingredient in effective communication. It's the foundational principle that holds all relationships." Stephen Covey. As we leave this room, let us all remember to work towards trusting others, as well as work towards gaining the trust of those around us. Thank you, and I look forward to working with all of you in the coming year.
Thank you, Ms. Skerrish. Up next is Pennsylvania's For a Brighter Future. Hello, Dr. Walker. I see you have a team with you tonight.
We do. Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm Martha Walker from the Dan River District, and I bring greetings to all the board members, Superintendent Jones, and all of our administrators and our students. This is the best night of all to be here because of all the wonderful achievements of our students. That's why we do what we do. That's why we go out, that's why we talk to people about things that are important to this county. And as you know, what's important to this county at this moment, along with everything else you're working on, is a 1% sales tax referendum that is on the November 8 ballot. We have been asking for support since that was placed on the ballot in November. We know it will raise $3.8 million at a minimum. We even looked at what some of the numbers were from this last week's, uh, um, VRR concert, and based on projections from last year, last year taxes, sales tax increased by 28% when you had that many tourists in the community. That says a lot about potential of why a sales tax is an equitable tax and important. Most importantly, we know what it's invested in. Pennsylvania County has done- Pennsylvania County has done its due diligence. We know that our schools, our elementary schools, are going to be impacted in a positive way. But most importantly as well, we know that $12 million is being designated for our career and technical programs. Tonight with us, we have people that you already know and that you have heard from. I want to introduce Ms. Angela Rigney, who needs no introduction to this group or to those listening online. So Ms. Rigney, will you come? And then followed by our principal, Ms. Jessica Dalton.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Dalton, School Board Members, Dr. Jones, and Pennsylvania County citizens. Of course, as you all know, my name is Angela Rigney, and I'm the Director of Career and Technical and Adult Education for the Division, and also a parent of a student at Chatham High School and the STEM Academy. Pennsylvania County Schools has been a key partner in developing and implementing various initiatives that greatly benefit the region. The Pennsylvania Career and Technical Center has been very instrumental in laying a firm foundation in the economic growth and transformation of the region. Through partnerships and collaboration, the students in Pennsylvania County have an opportunity to train on high-tech equipment, earn college credits, and gain the knowledge and skills necessary to be prepared for careers in high-wage, high-demand industries. This collaborative team is working together to create a regional training facilities, expand capacity and feeder programs, and increase awareness of career opportunities in the fields of agriculture, automotive, IT, precision machining, welding, automation and robotics, engineering, hospitality and tourism, public services, HVAC, industrial maintenance, electricity, education, and health and medical sciences. These initiatives that I have been a part of at elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, the STEM Academy, and the Pennsylvania Career and Technical Center have primarily been funded by grants and other funding sources totaling approximately $8 million. Thus, in order for us to move this region in the right direction, Pennsylvania County citizens need to invest in our children's future to provide them with safe and innovative learning environments that prepares them for careers of the future. The career and technical education programs at the Pennsylvania Career and Technical Center and other programs need to be renovated and facilities expanded in order for us to meet the needs of the region. I challenge each citizen to answer this question. Do you go to the doctor, have an automobile, have a home, wear clothes, have a phone, have heat and air conditioning, eat? And the list could go on. If you answered yes to any of these, then you should invest in our students because we are training them to be the next doctors, mechanics, machinists, nurses, cosmetologists, welders, HVAC technicians, police officers, first responders, teachers, cooks, and again, the list could go on. The success and recognition our programs are receiving across the country and internationally should make every citizen in this region proud and want to invest in the capital improvements of the facilities. I extend an invitation for anyone to visit the Career and Technical Center and let us show you firsthand what many identify as the best-kept secret in Pennsylvania County. I hope the stories and message we share this evening will encourage you to vote yes for PCS this November. At this time, I invite Ms. Jessica Dalton to the podium. Good evening. Chairman Dalton, School Board Members, Dr. Jones, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening regarding the 1% sales tax and the benefit to the Pennsylvania Career and Technical Center. As the Principal of PCTC, my job is to oversee and manage the operations of the building. With that, we've had experience of issues with major leaks within our building that have damaged equipment and, quite honestly, cannot be replaced due to the expense. As many know, millions of dollars of grant funds have been invested into the state-of-the-art equipment to streamline training purposes in our programs. Having a building that's outdated with new heavy equipment puts us at risk when we face issues such as having enough electricity to run our automation robotics program, our welding lab, our precision machining lab, and our new IT academy. In addition, unlike other schools, we do not have a common meeting area for competition meetings, classroom meetings, et cetera. This has caused a burden when hosting Skills USA competitions. We at times have to find different location sites to conduct these meetings. You heard from our CTE Director, Ms. Rigney, and the need and impact for economic development in our region. We are an integral part of supporting this local, regional, industry, and business need. If we look five to seven to 10 years down the road, we need to evaluate the programs and new programs our region may need for workforce development. At this time, PCTC is at capacity. Ms. Rigney and myself are now currently hearing the needs of our partners and, at this time, cannot meet their needs due to the fact that we cannot bring another program in our building. Now currently, some of our labs hold a classroom, and this also creates spacing and sometimes safety concerns due to the fact that we are essentially out of space and out of room. Many of our programs require accreditations, and with this, we must meet those needs to keep the programs open and current. Again, this is a good problem to have because it shows growth and improvement in our numbers and our programs. However, we need to think about our future and where we will be if we do not have space to grow. This 1% sales tax will provide the opportunity for growth in our community and our region and support those needs. This evening, you will have the opportunity to hear from PCTC alumni as well as a current student regarding their perspectives and testimonies about this 1% sales tax. I invite them to come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Leighton Wilson. During my junior and senior year of high school, I attended Pennsylvania County Technical Career Center and was a student in the Precision Machining Technology Program. During my time there, I found my passion in my future career in machining, and so many others found their passion in other programs. PCTC has changed me into a brighter and more self-efficient person where no one else could. I had the honor to be in a club called Skills USA and compete in the CNC Milling Specialist Category. I succeeded in becoming a district champion, state champion, and traveling to Atlanta, Georgia to place sixth nationally. I even had the opportunity to speak with GOTEC students at the middle school explaining my role at PCTC and encourage them to work up to becoming a student there. Today, there is a huge disadvantage when it comes to students getting the education that they desire to have. No one should have to pay the amount of money for college just to achieve a career job. That is exactly what PCTC helps with. Students come out with certifications ready to be hired without the push for college. Yes, I agree that every student should go to college, but some people aren't as fortunate as others. This technical center offers a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for students to get ahead of their future. Even though PCTC has so many benefits, is an outstanding place to learn, the facility has some problems. When I was in the Precision Machining Program, everything had to be perfect, precise, and without room for error. But we were faced with problems in the shop. We had a water leak that caused rust on a milling table, and the machine was out of commission for a while. Our CNC milling machine has a major air leak, and we're not able to use it the entire time I was there and the years before. We also have had other leaks that has caused problems in the shop, limiting our production process. These obstacles have put this program behind on the education that it potentially offers. I can only speak for the program that I was most familiar with, but I am certain that the same things are happening with every program. The condition of this facility affects the education students can potentially have by limiting what they can learn. This 1% sales tax will benefit PCTC in extravagant ways. With that money, we could add up to 15 more programs, extend the building, and bring more and more students to give them the same experience I once had. Ms. Rigney works to secure grants for textbooks, equipment, and tools. That money cannot be used toward capital improvements. Localities need to invest in capital improvements for their children. Our future workforce is depending on our education system and a technical center that can make our students a part of the pipeline that is already in place. One last question I want to leave for you all to answer is, would you want your children and grandchildren to go to a school like this to get a grasp for their future career? Thank you for your time, and I hope my words can influence you to vote yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Caleb Wells. During my junior and senior years of high school, I attended PCTC and took Precision Machining. During my time there, I fell in love with machining and all things about it. PCTC has made me a better person and has made my life a lot better from the friends that I can call family who I met there. In my senior year, I was able to compete in Skills USA in the CNC Turning Specialist Category. I loved and appreciated the opportunity so much. I was able to become a district and state champion and play sixth in the national finals in Atlanta, Georgia in June. Anyways, today, there is a big dry area when it comes to students getting the education they deserve in high school. In my opinion, no student should have to pay to go to school to learn the trade, and that is what PCTC is helpful for. Students can graduate with a certification in many forms of trades and go straight into the workforce. I do believe that you should go to college to further advance your knowledge in a trade as well, but some people do not have the ability to pay for college. That's where PCTC comes into play, helping students who are more unfortunate than others. Even though PCTC is a great place to get a head start in life, it still has some problems. Even in my Precision Machining course, I could spot out the problems. We would have water and air leaks, it seems like, every day. And granted, yes, they would get fixed because the staff is always on top of their game. It seems like something new would arise every day. The air and water leaks would slow down our production and make it difficult to get projects out. We didn't even get to use our CNC milling machine because of the major air leaks and the machine being so outdated that it still uses a floppy disk. These things have caused the program to take a slight decline from what it was before these issues started arising. I know I am only speaking for the one program, but it is the one that I would call school for half of the day, five days a week, for two years. This 1% sales tax will benefit PCTC in ways that would not even be thought of before. With the money PCTC could receive, they could expand the building, creating up to 15 new programs and bringing in more students with great minds who want to help build our country by working in the trades. Our future depends on these trades, and PCTC is the start of something special in many people's lives. It is a great opportunity for your children and grandchildren to get a head start in their lives and do something productive. I am encouraging all young people, people who care about the future of America and people who support the trades, to vote yes, to build a stronger workforce and to keep America and our area great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Toni Myers, and I'm a senior at Gretna High School in PCTC. Last year, I took electricity, and now I have returned to PCTC as a senior, taking the Industrial Maintenance Program. My parents and I know and respect the fact that I want to learn hands-on skills to be effective in my work environment. My father works construction, and I currently work with my father and find my hands-on training very important. I have truly enjoyed my classes at PCTC, hence the reason I chose to come back my senior year. This past summer, I had the opportunity to compete at National USA, National Skills USA in Atlanta, Georgia, and gained a wealth and knowledge and relationships I would carry into my future. PCTC and the staff have helped mold me into who I am today. However, as a member of this community and student in the school, I am concerned regarding the future and the need to update and create rooms for additional programs. Like I said, my father works construction, and I would love to see building trades be brought into PCTC along with others. However, they have no space currently. In addition, the locker rooms are outdated and need to be redone. I hope to remain in this area and realize without a community understanding and investing in programs in our schools, we may not be able to fix the current problems we have and may not be able to bring new programs to PCTC. I ask that everyone vote for the 1% sales tax and invest in our students' programs in future.
Thank you.
Good evening. School Board Members, Dr. Jones, Assistant Superintendents, and guests. My name is Lake Hughes. I'm a 2022 graduate of Dan River High School. My junior and senior years were spent as a Precision Machining student at the Pennsylvania Career and Technical Center, better known as PCTC. I'm here this evening to talk about how the 1% sales tax can benefit the schools in Pennsylvania County, especially PCTC. The Pennsylvania Career and Technical Center was built in 1978, and not many renovations have been done there in the past 44 years. The 1% sales tax increase will fund the construction and renovations for several of the 20 programs offered. Just in the machining shop alone, there are multiple repairs and renovations needed. Other programs can be extended and some even relocated. All of the programs would benefit from the sales tax increase, and it ties more students to attend PCTC as well. While paying 1% sales tax increase seems terrible to some people, it is actually an investment for the future of Pennsylvania County. It is well worth it to enhance the educational needs in our area so that students can participate in hands-on training programs in a safe, equipped building that allows them to prepare for their future as well as ours. So I ask everyone here this evening to please vote yes on November 8th so Pennsylvania County can impose a 1% sales tax for the construction and renovation of our schools. Thusway, Pennsylvania County Schools can continue to be a great place to learn and work. Thank you for your time.
So I'm going to ask y'all, what's more important than educating our students? I don't think anything is. No, you're all right, Ms. Reagan, come on. I was just waiting for you. But I think if you haven't had a chance to look and see what the 1% sales tax is going to be used for, please take the time to educate yourself. Yes, it's a tax, and that's a bad word. And everybody says, "I'm not voting for a tax." But please educate yourself on how this will work and why it's important and what the funds are going to be spent for and what we need to improve our safety in our buildings. And that's all it can be spent for, is to improve our buildings. And, you know, like Ms. Walker said a few minutes ago, look how much would have been paid from outside of the county this past weekend that would have paid that bill that would not have come out of our pockets. So really, please educate yourself on what this 1% means before you just jump up and say, "I don't want to pay another tax," because it's very, very important. And for those who own land and cars and things that you already have personal property taxes on homes, just think about if this doesn't pass and the burden falls back on just those select few people that own property in Pennsylvania County now. Because some of this work is going to have to take place eventually, whether it's later in a few years. So please educate yourself on what this does. Ms. Rigney?
Thank you. I do want to take this opportunity to thank our students for coming back this evening. They are all enrolled in programs at the Community College and do have very busy schedules and work. And these are just four examples of phenomenal students that we have who are invested in the future of our programs. These students are willing to come back and give back to Pennsylvania County Schools because of what they got from Pennsylvania County Schools. So I challenge you to ask all of the students enrolled in programs at the Pennsylvania Career and Technical Center, as well as the elementary schools and the other programs that are on the docket that would be impacted by these renovations and these capital improvement projects. We thank you for your time. Board, Dr. Jones, anyone have any questions for our team this evening?
Any board members? Thank you, Ms. Rigney. Dr. Walker, thank you so much. Next on the list is the PEA, the other Dr. Jones, as I like to call her. So we're a month into school, almost six weeks into school, right? So you're going to give us all the good news, right? That's all I want tonight's good news.
Well, you know what? I have been led by the conversations I've heard and forgive my manners and my upbringing. A good evening to you all. And I want to say thank you for your investment in us and education. There are many things that you could be doing, and you chose this vocation. And sometimes I think that the task is just not set thankful enough. So I'm saying to you, thank you. Because yes, Mr. Dalton, we have completed almost a full six weeks of school. And when you say you want to hear the positive, I will give you positive, but I'll be also honest. A lot of people are searching for peace and the hastiness of life and all the things that we've seen happen in our society that are occurring around us. are occurring around us, often peace seems like it's an elusive creature. And that is to everybody that's in this room and those who are watching online. And the reality of it is, when we're looking at education, we are often worried about what happens to our future. Do we have enough individuals coming into the profession to continue on? And what does that look like? Not just for today, but for the next decade and the next generation of individuals who chosen to lead and want to do good in their communities. But again, it's peace, peace in decision-making, peace in knowing that you've made the right choice. So I know this past school year, I started and ended my address with a prayer, and I stand here tonight telling you I'm compelled to do the same thing again. So on this day and all the days ahead, for each and every one of us, mend a quarrel, search out a forgotten friend, dismiss suspicion and replace it with trust. Word of a character word of the month. Write a love letter, share some treasures, give a soft answer, encourage youth. Manifest your loyalty in a word or deed. Keep a promise, find the time. Forgo a grudge, forgive an enemy. Listen. Apologize if you were wrong. Try to understand. Flout envy. Examine your demands on others. Think first of someone else. Appreciate, be kind, be gentle. Laugh a little more. Deserve confidence. Take up arms against malice. Decry complacency. Express your gratitude and worship your God, whoever that might be. Glad in the heart of a child. Take pleasure in the beauty and wonder of the earth. Speak your love. Speak it again. Still speak it once more and speak it even more. And never cease to speak the truth, because the truth is what sets you free. So as we look for peace, all of us in all that we do, I thank you again for choosing this as your vocation, because you're needed for today and for the future.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Staff and committee reports. Does anybody have any questions on any of the desk reports we need? No questions? We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Dr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Mr. Dawes and members of the school board, I would just like to draw your attention back to the staff report on the AED purchases. We have purchased four additional AEDs that I have received. Several phone calls over the years about having those accessible on our fields, and so our school nurse coordinators have done that. So just, I think that's a very good purchase for the division. They'll be available for outside activities at the school. So just to draw your attention to that. My items this evening, there was a nice article in the paper, Star Tribune, about the ninth and 10th grade program at the STEM Academy. I appreciate Mrs. Rigney and her staff for spearheading that initiative this year. We opened those programs there, but a very nice article there in the paper. I think it's going to be featured in Smart Brief, which is disseminated nationwide. So that's additional recognition for that program. Also, Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Henderson were with me Monday, yesterday, at Dan River Middle School for their 9/11 ceremony. Outstanding again. That school, Mr. Nick is in the audience this evening, along with Mr. Earl Glass and his staff and Mr. Nick's staff there, just do a wonderful job with that presentation each year. Other items that I have on the agenda, we had a sales tax referendum update this evening. I won't go through those items, but there's a list there of the meetings that will take place between now and Election Day. There's also some remarks from Dr. Walker there. If you're interested in helping assisting with any of those items there, it's there for you. I'd like to provide you all with an update regarding dress code. The Dress Code Committee met on September the 8th. Approximately 23 people participated in meeting. The committee reviewed the data from a survey to parents and teachers on dress code. The committee reviewed the current dress code and a revision of the dress code with first edits made by the school board's attorney. The committee discussed the data from the survey and the attorney's remarks and made suggestions. 1,392 parents responded to the survey. Approximately 61% of the survey respondents who were parents were in favor of not changing the dress code. Of the 39% of the respondents in favor of revisions, leggings at 7.33%. Treating boys and girls equally, 6.18% were the areas of most concern. 73% of the teachers indicated in their survey that they did not have any concerns with the dress code, and of the 27% who indicated they did, many had suggestions to make the dress code more strict. Based on the discussion and a second, a second edition of the dress code is being drafted and will be sent to committee members for their input. We'll have an update for you in October regarding the revisions that the committee is suggesting. I'd like to provide to you also a middle school athletics update. The IT department has launched a survey to all parents on the feasibility of offering a middle school athletics program. The survey closes on September the 22nd, and a report will be made to you all at the October board meeting. Bridging the Gap, Pennsylvania County Schools has been selected to participate in the Virginia Department of Education Bridging the Gap Learning Loss Recovery Plan Initiative. This is a pilot program that will spotlight some of the great programs, intervention strategies, and successes that school divisions across Virginia are implementing now while supporting more innovative applications of data-driven instruction and increasing the capacity of every school to strengthen their relationships with parents and student caregivers. Over the coming weeks, our instructional staff will participate in meetings with the Virginia Department of Education staff that will outline this program, and that will be provided to the board at future meetings. Also, this evening, there was a desk report provided by Mrs. Dawson and Mrs. Petty that had our SOL scores, and I would like to again draw your attention to that because we've done some analysis of our scores. You know, while the last two years have been difficult at best, we feel very good about where our students are at this time. While they're not where we think they would have been had we been in school, when we compare our scores across the state, I'd like to bring this back up. I think I've shared this with you before, but we are 17th best in the state out of 132 school divisions in reading and math, which is the top 13%. And we are 20th best in science as far as pass rates in science, and that's the top 15%. So it really says a lot about what our staff does with our students, says a lot about our households and families and the concerns they have for education, and it speaks volumes about Pennsylvania County schools. So I'd like to thank Mrs. Petty and her staff, thank Mrs. Dawson for the data this evening, and again express how proud we are of our students and staff.
I think that's awesome. I really do. That's fantastic.
And, Mr. Dawes, I do have some information regarding VSPA conferences. The VSPA Legislative Advisory Conference is September the 22nd. The 17th Annual VSPA Student School Board Representative Workshop is on November the 16th, and the VSPA Annual Conference Convention is on November the 16th through the 18th. And, Mr. Dawes, that's all I have this evening.
That it? Thank you, Dr. Jones. Okay, we have no unfinished business, so under new business, we have charge and support program participation agreement with Dominion. And, Mr. Scott, that's for the electric buses, correct? We have one for the first two, and this is for the other two, right? Okay.
We approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Mr. Henderson?
Aye.
Ms. Merricks?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Moon?
Aye.
Mr. Dawes?
Aye. And then next, we have a request for declaration of surplus property, vehicles and equipment. Again, Mr. Scott, you have some stuff you want to put online, correct?
I'll make a motion. Second?
Motion and second. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Mr. Henderson?
Aye.
Ms. Merricks?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Moon?
Aye.
Mr. Dawes?
I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, for those online for watching. We appreciate all the support, and we'll see you in October. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Mr. Henderson?
Aye.
Ms. Merricks?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Moon?
Aye.
Mr. Dawes?
Aye.